To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you saying thank you, Lord, for another day. Lord, we ask that you be in the midst of our meeting, guide us and direct us, Lord, so we can do what's necessary to make our city a better place for all the residents of our great city. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Roll call vote, Clerk Golick.
Markovich here. Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Enosah.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Number three will be up for presentation, Clerk Golick.
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
Each year, uh, for Black History Month, I acknowledge someone of status, someone of character, someone who's made a contribution to not just the 3rd District but to the City of Hammond. So this year, we'll be honoring Ms. Annie Burns Hicks, and I'll have Clerk Golick read this. Uh, the matriarch of the family is here, Ms. Burns, if you could please step to the podium, as well as Ms. Cott Wright.
A proclamation by the Hammond Common Council to honor Annie Burns Hicks. Whereas Mrs. Annie Burns Hicks is the first of thirteen children born to Reverend AR and Mary Burns, she was born in Enterprise, Mississippi, but reared in Hammond, Indiana, and is the product of the Hammond School System. Her dream to become an elementary school teacher became a reality as a result of a federal lawsuit. In September 1960, she became the first African-American teacher in the school city of Hammond. She was instrumental in instructing the Distar Reading and Math curriculum for all-day kindergarten at the Maywood Elementary School in the early 1980s. It continues to be successful today. Whereas Mrs. Hicks has a BS degree from Ball State University in Muncie, Indiana, and a M. Ed. in Education and Counseling from DePaul University in Chicago. She has also attended Western Michigan University in Kalamazoo, Michigan, and IUPUI in Indianapolis. She retired after teaching after forty years in Gary, Hammond, and Indianapolis, Indiana, and Battle Creek, Michigan. She is the author of a children's book about Benjamin Banneker and an activity book for young children on black history, and has produced a set of black history puzzles for children ages three to eight. She is an Oasis tutor, a worker in The Greeters, and Senior Saints Ministries at Eastern Star Church, a volunteer in Warren Township Public Schools, and a member of the Methodist Hospital Volunteer Services. She is very active in her neighborhood homeowners association where she has served as vice president. She is the mother of two daughters, attorney Miltina Gavia, Mary Hicks, and she is Mimi to four grandchildren, Nia, Nyla, Alexis, and Taylor. She remains a member of the Tabitha Kalix Federated Women's Club of Hammond, Indiana. Therefore, the Common Council, on behalf of the citizens of the City of Hammond, recognizes and honors the achievements and service to the public good of Annie Burns Hicks.
Thank you, Mrs. Hicks.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Annie Hicks, we thank you very much for this great honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, I want to say thank you. It's mean a lot to me. You'll never know how much, and thank you so much, and thank you, Nia.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Number four, reading of minutes.
President, make a motion to accept the minutes from January 23rd, 2012 meeting. I so move.
Second.
First by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kalwinski, accept the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of claims, Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, January 18th through February 8th, 2012, for council meeting February 13th, 2012.
Second.
Beginning with claims dated 1/24/12 and ending with claims dated 2/8/12, claims number 5/21 through claims 1/041, I so move.
And first by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgins, to accept the claims. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I have some amendments here. Claim number 1/042, All Saints Church, $200 donation taken out of promotional count of Councilman Salinas. Claim number 1/043, Christian Revival Center, $50 promotional count of Councilman Salinas for a walkathon. Claim number 1/044, $207, All Saints Church, from the promotional count of Councilman Salinas. Claim number 1/045, St. John the Baptist School, $300. $150 from Janet Vines and $150 from Spitali for their winter festival. Claim number 1/046, Embassy Suites, $252.94, Councilman Markovich to attend a legislative conference in Indianapolis, February 14th and 15th. Claim number 1/047, Indiana Associations of Cities and Towns, $168, pre-conference workshop for Councilman Markovich for the legislative conference, I so move.
Second.
First by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgins on the amendments. Is there any discussion on the amendments?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
We have one more claim. I think, for the police department. For police garage, contractual services, I so move.
Second.
First by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Kalwinski for the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on the amendment.
This, uh, point of order, the second was made by Councilman Enahosa on that last amendment.
I thought it was Councilman Higgins.
I second the motion for the previous claims, but the last one was done by Councilman Enahosa for $35,000 for the police garage.
So the first vote will be on the second amendment. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Roll call vote on the second amendment, Clerk Golick.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosah.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Amendment passes, nine zero. Now, roll call vote on the first amendment of the claims. Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosah.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Enosah passes nine zip. Now the approval of claims. Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Enosah.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Approval of claims passes nine zero. Number six, public hearing.
Item eight, ordinance 12-06, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski, and ordinance of the City of Hammond, Indiana concerning improvements by the Board of Sanitary Commissioners through the issuance and sale of bonds and other matters connected therewith.
Public hearing is now open.
Public hearing is now open.
Mr. President.
Councilman Enahosa.
Um, I like to make an amendment, since there's, uh, people here that are here to talk about also, uh, about the, uh, the 1.3, 1.3 million, 45,000 that we're gonna appropriate from our casino money. It's a very large amount. Uh, I'd like to make an amendment that, uh, that after we talk about 12-6, which is for a public hearing, that, uh, we also include, secondly, can I do that? Okay. I take that back, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Enahosa. Public hearing. Anybody here to speak about public hearing? 12-6.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. Yeah, I'm a little concerned at the lack of details on this thing. We're talking about approximately, at least to begin with, 177 million dollars for improvements that we apparently can't avoid. Uh, and right now, I think the sanitary district rates are somewhat reasonable, and we have no figures at all about how much they're going to increase. And, uh, you know, and there's no details on what if this thing has to be refinanced because of unforeseen costs, this, that, what have you. Does this body have to pass any refinancing agreement? Because once the Wall Street guys get involved, anything can happen. And that's what really concerns me about this, is the financing, that's so much the need for it. You know, I think the citizens of Hammond, I know myself, am willing to, uh, undergo this. Uh, but, uh, you know, I don't know where we stand on this, and none of you guys have come forth with anything. Uh, you know, it's just, here, let's just rubber stamp this because it's needed, and if we go to court, well, we'll lose. Well, this thing must have been pending for I don't know how many years, and now it's just gonna be, you know, here, prove it. So, I'm surprised that you guys didn't ask any more questions, especially on the financing. I don't know if you have any history, uh, of some of these deals, like, for example, what happened in Jefferson County, Alabama, when they were in, basically had a similar situation. EPA came in and said, hey, you gotta, you've got to, uh, you've got to separate your sewer and, uh, stormwater, uh, lines and this and that, basically creating a large toilet, okay? And they started up $205 million. Well, but, and people were paying $14 a month for their sanitary, uh, services. By the time they got done, they were paying almost $200. You know, I mean, there, and they had refinanced, refinanced, refinanced. It was crazy. And no one said a word. That's all.
Mr. President, I understand it's a-
Councilman Higgins.
I understand it's a public hearing, but he said 177 million, 77 million.
That's correct. 77 million.
Well, no, you got 70 pending right now, or you got 70 outstanding. Alvin Cheeth, 800 Block of Merrill. Um, my, my thing is this, is that I spent many years working for Grimmer, Rex Construction, um, tons of them, Indiana's last. If, if you've been 30 feet up under the ground and, and you know that we have to separate them, I guess the big issue is that, is the construction company's gonna come from this area, the bond bank is a minority-owned bank, so that gives us the opportunity to save us some dollars. Of course, it's gonna raise in some kind of way something, but if we don't separate it, we gonna pay 10 times the dollar amount. Many years ago, the Lake George dredging project cost cities a lot of money to dredge and clean that area. So I would just hope that, you know, we develop it in a way that it, it gives us more clean water. Anybody that knows anything about water, you, you know, you drink it, you know, so you don't want the things that's going on with the lakes still happening. So if it's an opportunity to clean our lakes and to make it better, I, for one, I'm a union guy, I've been on union projects, non-union. So if it's an opportunity for, for people in this area to see some resources and some of the companies, you know, at this time to get some economic wealth, then it's an opportunity. And, and second of all, you know, if, if you look at what's going on in our region, we're gonna have to clean our water up. If you know anything about the Great Lakes or the northeastern seaboard, is that it dumps off in the Lake Michigan, so we don't have opportunity not to, not to clean our water up. So I would, I would hope that this council, you know, makes sure that, you know, we do the project, but make sure that people from Indiana, people from Hammond get opportunity to work on the project. So that, that would be my conjunction, is that, you know, it's, it's a great project, seeing those kind of projects coming to Indiana, so I would hope that this council just ensures that we get our opportunity too in terms of the projects remaining, a local project, and, and we benefit from that area. So thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Stotny, could you give a little brief synopsis of the project?
That's fine.
Hi, my name's Mike Vicki, I'm a project manager with Don Hugh, that's, uh, been working with the Hammond Sanitary District for a number of years. Um, in this bond issue, there are six projects. Uh, three of them have to do with getting combined sewer overflows out of the Grand Calumet River West Branch. Uh, right now, during, um, a typical year, 172 times, 172 times, polluted water goes to the west branch of the Grand Calumet River. The first three projects have to do with remedying that situation. There'll be a 29 million gallon, uh, storage basin built, there's some demolition to get ready for the storage basin, and then there's some pipes that are gonna take flow from the three pump stations to the basin. When this project is constructed, instead of having 172 overflows a year, you'll have so, so the water will be much cleaner. There's two other projects that have to do with getting CSOs out of the Little Calumet River, and then there's a project that has to do with the Robertsdale Pump Station and forest mains. Uh, there's, the Robertsdale Pump Station pumps stormwater to Lake Michigan, and there's also a part that pumps sanitary sewage to the plant. There's two forest mains that take flow from the, the pump station down to the plant. They're both have experienced failures in the past. So both those forest mains need to be fixed, plus the pump station needs, there's some improvements that need to be done at the pump station so that it's more reliable. Has to do with fixing a stormwater pump, some new pumps, some new piping, and some automation. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
I just wanted to, uh, we've been working with, uh, the federal government on this project. This is basically, uh, a project that's gonna start us towards, uh, separating and minimizing the actual combined sewer overflows, which is during heavy rain events, we have our sanitary sewers mixed with our stormwaters that gets discharged into the Grand Calumet River, uh, and I think we'd all agree that anytime you discharge sewage in the Grand Calumet River, that's unfortunate. It's, it's unfortunate that with these heavy rain events, it's happened around 160 times in, in a year.
Yes.
In a given year, and, um, this is obviously, this project is gonna help minimize that basically to less than-
Four.
Less than four a year, four or less. So, um, we've been talking about this project for a long time. In fact, uh, the consent decree was entered in 1999, I keep looking back at the experts. Uh, this has been a long time coming. Uh, it's not unusual for a city of our age to have problems like this. Uh, newer communities like Fishers and Winfield, when they, when they put their infrastructure in place, they separated it off the bat. Unfortunately for us in Hammond, 50 years ago, you didn't have to worry about separating the sanitary and the stormwater. Uh, now we do. So it's gonna be a process for us to go through and, and make our city, uh, completely separated so that we can minimize the discharges of raw sewage into the Grand Calumet River. Uh, that's what this is all about. Um, you know, it's a big number. I'd also like to point out that a recent change in state law requires the sanitary district, because there are unelected board members, to bring these types of issues before the fiscal body of the city, which is you guys. So I would get used to these types of things happening. Uh, this is the way Indiana government's been going, so you will see a lot more of these outside issues coming through you in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else like to speak under public hearing? Anybody else like to speak? Public hearing is now closed. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
Receive the correspondence from the Hammond Port Authority. It says, "The Hammond Port Authority Board and Staff wish to extend an invitation to you, the student athletes, and an opportunity to apply for a lifeguard position that will become available for the 2012 beach season. Application can be obtained from the Hammond Port Authority located at 701 Casino Center Drive, Hammond, Indiana, 46320. After applications are received and reviewed, the life, excuse me, the lifeguard coordinator will schedule interviews with the prospective employees. First consideration will be given to those already in possessing of a proper American Red Cross Open Water Life Saving Certificate and who are Hammond residents. We are currently working with the local chapter training facility in order to provide them with a certificate. We have enclosed an employment application, please copy for interested students. Please have the students call the Hammond Port Authority for further questions and confirm their spot in the class, 219-659-7678. Thank you, Hammond Port Authority."
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
I just wanted to personally, uh, congratulate, uh, a long life and prosperity to Ms. Grace Alexander, who celebrated her 100th birthday this past Saturday, and I was able to attend that, and I just wanted to wish her many more.
Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Enahosa.
The streets and alleys will be bringing out 12-4.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Councilors of whole will be bringing out 11-26.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kalwinski.
Also, Councilors of whole will bring out 12-04, 12-05, and 12-06.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Ordinance third, final reading.
Ordinance number 11-26, sponsored by Councilman Vines, and ordinance to amend Chapter 122 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains regulating door-to-door solicitors operating in the City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, as a result of attending some of, uh, the crime watch meetings in the city recently, uh, I've heard some concerns from residents who have experienced solicitors knocking at their door, uh, after dark, number one, and number two, they've been soliciting, uh, a product that the, um, resident already has a sign in their yard. Uh, so to give our residents some peace of mind, uh, I'd like to move forward with this. Okay. Uh, I would like to amend it.
First of all, we need a second on the ordinance.
Second.
It's been first by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spitali to amend the ordinance.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to amend this ordinance, uh, as it was originally written, to, uh, limit the hours of operation for door-to-door solicitors, uh, changing it from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM to 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. Uh, also, uh, because this, uh, ordinance was proposed back in July last year, uh, I would like to change, uh, the date that the license will be valid, uh, for this year only, 2012, beginning March 1st through December 31st. I so move.
First of all, Councilwoman, uh, Vines, you need to be a sponsor on this ordinance.
Oh, yes. And I would like to add my name as a sponsor.
Okay, Councilwoman Vines, we're putting our, putting our name on 11-26 as a sponsor. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Who's the second on the sponsor?
Now, I would ask you.
Okay. Sorry, Dan, I didn't hear you. The second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President. Uh, I think it, I think it's a good ordinance. I, as I read it over, uh, I was wondering, we have Girl Scouts, we have Little League folks, and they, these are unscrupulous solicitors it's designed for, as I understand it. They also do go door-to-door, take future orders. I just wonder where the, our people, I mean, I understand if you see a parent with a Girl Scout that, you know, you would probably answer your door politely refuse. So I'm just throwing that out there. I understand the unscrupulous part, uh, so I just wanna make sure that people know that we're not discouraging those kinds of, uh, folks.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
If, uh, if I could weigh in, I think it's a great idea, the ordinance itself, uh, because we, we do know, uh, through my police chief, he talks a lot at staff meetings about, a lot of people are knocking on your doors and acting like they're selling stuff, and if you're not there, then they know that you're not there and they can come back and get you. Uh, and if you do come to the door and answer, they act like they're selling some inconspicuous that you wouldn't want anyway. So this is a good way for people to, to sort of, you know, stake out your house. Uh, I think that some type of ID or something issued by the city is a good idea, so that residents get used to, if you see a person and they got some type of ID that's issued by the city, that they could see that this person's been approved, so to speak, for door-to-door solicitation. But I think it's a great idea. I think it'll help us cut down on crime, actually, so, you know, I just wanted to add my approval.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgins.
I mean, it sounds good in essence, but the reality of it is, is that, um, what if you got a baseball team that's trying to raise funds, are we gonna exclude them in this, uh, ordinance? Are the Girl Scouts, like, he, um, Councilman Emerson just stated, uh, if they wanna go door-to-door and try to get, uh, donations, I mean, uh, are we gonna designate which organizations that are exempt or what? Are we just gonna vote on this and say, hey, uh, you need a permit, you gotta pay $100, and this is the requirement, and you're gonna wear a tag when you go door-to-door? I just think we need to define some of the organizations so that, you know, because a lot of worthwhile organizations in our city need, uh, funding to stay alive from year to year, and, and that's one way of fundraising, and I know the Girl Scouts go door-to-door selling cookies, so, um, just food for thought.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
I, I think Councilman Higgins brings up a real good point. I mean, I just had a Girl Scout, uh, at my door the other day, and she sold me $8 worth of cookies, and the thing is, in cases like that, to ask a Girl Scout to get a $100, um, fee from the city may, I don't know if there's language built into this ordinance that spells that out or not, but, I mean, that's something that definitely needs to be thought about, and then there should be language in there that protects, uh, political activity, First Amendment stuff. I mean, you can't for, you can't force somebody ready for office to pay $100 to the city to go door-to-door, so.
The political activity is in the ordinance. Mr. President.
Chris, if I may.
Councilman Higgins.
Political is in the ordinance, but there, there, I'm talking about the organizations, like you said, the Girl Scouts, they are not defined in the ordinance, so.
The organization, well, Chris.
Well, if you, look at the very last paragraph, it says it excludes, uh, religious or political groups, perhaps if you wanted to add language nonprofits.
groups. Perhaps if you wanted to add language nonprofits, or recognized nonprofits, or 501(c)(3) nonprofits, to that very last paragraph, it'd be a real simple addition, which would keep with the context of that paragraph.
Thank you. I think that's a real good idea, because the Girl Scouts, that's a perfect example of somebody that would be harmed. If we had a Girl Scout had to buy a hundred dollar license from the city, they'd stop selling them, so.
Mr. President. If I can, I would like to amend that ordinance to exclude 501(c) organizations.
Okay, there's a first on the amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion on the second amendment?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
I'd like to put a third amendment in there that it exclude city workers.
Do I have a second?
We have, uh, yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we amend in that exclude city workers.
There's a third amendment on the floor. Do I have a second? It's a motion by Councilman Hinojosa, who's second.
Mr. President. That is to include a crisis or something where we had to pass out flyers in the community, that it'd be emergency. The street department, police department might have to pass out flyers out there, maybe not the police department, but it could be the city workers. Could be an emergency about something that's going on in the neighborhood. I think it should exclude city workers.
Councilman Hinojosa, who was the second on the third amendment?
The third is to amend in.
We know what the third is. Who seconded it?
There is no second yet. So, you need to call that three times. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second it just for discussion purposes.
Second, Councilman Markovich. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, any employee from the city, such as the water department, or if there was an emergency that city workers had to go door-to-door, they are required to carry identification on them. Therefore, I do not see any reason to have a city worker included in the, or excluded from this.
Any other discussion on the third amendment?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
The mayor was at the podium, you didn't extend the courtesy for him to speak about it, so I don't know if he still.
Thanks, Councilman. I was actually going back in time in my head to the day we were flooding, 2008, and we all got together over there in Riverside Park, and we had a bunch of firemen, a bunch of policemen, a bunch of street department workers, a bunch of sanitary department workers, and we all got flyers, and we went and knocked on doors. And the last thing in the world we were thinking about at that time was, does this violate city ordinance? I think it goes without saying that we're the city in an emergency situation, we don't need permission to knock on somebody's door, okay? I think it's sort of crazy, quite frankly, but I think it's a great idea, the ordinance, but I don't think it needs to be extended the way they're talking about.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Oh, just including myself. I don't wear a uniform, but what if I have to go knocking on doors because there's a crisis on a couple blocks of my neighborhood and I have to go knocking on doors? Does that exclude me also?
Are you selling something? You're selling something?
What's that?
Are you selling something? Are you selling soap or something?
But it's going door-to-door.
It's selling.
It's just for selling.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion on the third amendment?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Let's be clear on what we're voting on, so make our colleagues clear. I know where we at, but some of them may not be there. On the third amendment, and what are we voting on?
Clerk Golick, could you go over the third amendment?
The third amendment is to exclude city workers from this ordinance.
Roll call vote on the third amendment?
Markovich.
No.
Spitali.
No.
Vanez.
No.
Kowinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
No.
Emerson.
No.
Hinojosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
No.
Motion fails, seven to two. Now, roll call vote on the second amendment. Clerk Golick, before that roll call vote, could you read that second amendment?
It's to exclude the 501(c) organizations. If it were to pass, Mr. President, could I ask that the city attorney provide the language to be added in the ordinance for the clerk? Roll call on the second amendment to exclude 501(c) organizations. Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinojosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Motion passes, our amendment passes nine to zero. Now, on the ordinance itself, 1126.
There's one more amendment, Mr. Chairman. The first amendment on the time change.
Okay, correct. Roll call vote on the first amendment.
Mr. President.
Time change.
Mr. President. What was the time change? I think it was from 10 to, was it 10 to 6?
Five.
10 to 5, Monday through Saturday, and exclude Sundays?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
By excluding Sunday in there, that means it's not to be done on Sunday.
That's correct. Roll call vote on the first amendment.
Markovich.
No.
Spitali.
Yes.
Is he yes?
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinojosa.
Uh, yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Motion passes eight to one. Now, on the ordinance itself, 1126. Roll call vote, Clerk Golick.
As amended, Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinojosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance 1126 passes nine to nothing.
Ordinance 12-04 sponsored by Councilman Hinojosa. An ordinance designating the 7300 block of Grand Avenue as resident-only parking.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
I move for final passage of 12-4.
Second.
It's been first by Councilman Hinojosa, second by Councilman Markovich. Ordinance 12-4, any discussion?
Point of order. I second that.
We sound alike.
I heard Councilman Markovich. So, you didn't second it? Okay, and Councilman Higgs will be second. Happy there, Councilman Higgs?
Excuse me?
You happy with that?
Fine with me.
Okay, discussion. Councilman Hinojosa.
Yeah, this 7300 block of Grand Avenue is kitty corner from Scott Middle School on the southwest corner. I know, this will be on the southeast corner, being affected by, across the street where there's apartments, you have people that are parking on the street and then parking on the residential side when there's plenty of parking in the back of the apartment building. So, so far, the residents are pretty happy with this so far.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think it was a 90-day trial period for this particular ordinance. Am I correct, Councilman Hinojosa?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
That is correct. I talked to Gary Gleason today, and yeah, that is under 90 days.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
And the residents are complaining that there's not adequate parking, and the neighbors are saying that the residents should be parking in the lot, but they're parking in front of their homes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
The residents from the apartments are not complaining at all. They just want to park on the street and across the street where the residents are just on one side of the street, when there's plenty of parking in the back of the apartments, by the tracks there. As you're going south down Grand, before the tracks on the right-hand side, there's plenty of parking. So, it's not the apartment building residents that are complaining, it's the residents that the people from the apartments are parking across the street when they can't find a parking by the apartments. They're parking across the street in front of their residence that has houses only on one side, and this will just have them park in back of the building where they're supposed to park.
Any other discussion?
Call for the vote.
Roll call vote, Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinojosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance 12-4 passes nine to nothing.
Ordinance 12-05 sponsored by Councilman Opinker. An ordinance, amending ordinance 7685, 8200, 8564, 8630, 8645, 8718, 8754, 8755, 8854, 8930, 9017, and 9061, otherwise known as Section 36.005 of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to public safety in 2012 only.
I move for third and final passage of ordinance 12-5. Is there any discussion?
You need a second.
Second. Do I have a second? Councilman Kowinski?
Second.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Since this is a very large amount, 1.3 million 45,000, times nine, which includes the six districts, every councilman's going to wind up using around 50% of their casino money, $1,345,000. The mayor times three, that amount, it's going to be in excess of $12 million. I ask that we suspend the rules, because there's a lot of people here from the crime watches, there's a lot of people here that work for the city, residents that are concerned about where this money's going to go. As of right now, it just has that amount, but it doesn't say exactly where it's going to go. So, I ask that we suspend the rules so that we can let the public speak on this matter.
There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs to suspend the rules. All right, whoever wants to speak? Do a roll call.
Lori Zalno, Hammond, Indiana. It is my understanding that of the 1.345 million dollars per councilperson, $45,000 of that is earmarked for.
Point of order.
Councilman Higgs.
We need a roll call vote. We motioned and seconded, but we got to have a roll call vote before people.
Okay.
All in favor. Signified by I or something.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay?
As I said, it is my understanding of the 1.345 million dollars that each of you will be contributing, that $45,000 of that will be earmarked for Henry unit patrols specifically. I am here as a representative of the Indy ILE Crime Watch, and we do have concerns. We have had a great increase in crime in our neighborhood as of late. We feel this is a direct result of less Henry unit coverage, and we are concerned that $45,000 from each of you will not be sufficient to continue to patrol our areas. We are hoping we do not have to wait until the crime stats go through the ceiling and then come back to the council and ask for additional funds. It is my understanding that the police chief has said he can work within, inside these new monetary limits, but we are hoping if that is not the case, we can count on our council people to contribute additional funds, and that they will be marked for Henry unit use. Thank you.
Alvin Chief, Allen Block of Merrill. Let me say upfront, my house was broken to on my son's birthday, and his Christmas stuff was taken. But I'm vehemently against just using the Henry unit to park outside of my house or park on my block just to provide us with protection. $900,000, $45,000 is more than fair. You know, to increase that just to have a unit sitting on my block, that's unfair to the next block over where Councilman Higgs' door was broke before. So, that's not fair. You know, that's, I mean, that's repulsive just to have a unit sitting on one person's block, and then all they're going to do is go to the next block and do it. I mean, these young guys are breaking into everybody's houses. They're not discriminatory to who houses they're breaking into. So, just to have a squad car, or two officers sit in a squad car and just patrol one block, that's like hiring a security guard, and he's just going to watch the houses on my block. So, I would be vehemently against just using the Henry unit just to be a private security firm for my block or anybody else's block. The $45,000 is more than enough to provide adequate protection for the residents in all of the city. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Foster, Jim Foster. I'm here with the Indy ILE group. I got here late, and I missed some early discussions, and I may repeat something that's already said, and I'll apologize for that upfront. I know that in the district that is now Mr. Emerson's district, the prior councilperson I know contributed something like $190,000. It had a dramatic effect, where we went for two months last year with zero crime reports. It wasn't parking outside of anybody's house, it was the presence just of the vehicles, the presence of police vehicles. I'm not, I hope I'm not going over what was discussed earlier. I read an article weeks ago, and I think the chief of staff said words to the effect at that time, that the chief of police had said that this could be done with an amount of 890,000. That was going to be a reduction from 1.4 million. I'm all for saving money. I think we have to save money. But if I do the figures right, we're talking now about nine times 45,000, which is 405,000, which, if I read that article correctly, the chief said he could do the job with 890,000. So, we're giving him 405 instead of 890,000. I also understand that in earlier discussions, it was said that the money would maybe not, I believe the mayor may have been quoted as saying the money would not be used for Henry units. I think if you councilmen are going to delegate to the mayor the use of 45, you should delegate to him the use of 75. If he doesn't see fit to use it, so be it, or if he sees fit. But to limit it at 405, if I'm right with those figures that the chief suggested, 890,000. So, we would also, I know that in our area, we have kept some pretty close watch over the statistics. The Henry units came down in, I believe, December, some of the young ladies here, and that's a sexist remark. Will correct me when I'm wrong, but in the last two months, we had something like 20 reports, and the previous two months, we had something like seven reports. The common denominator was the cutback on Henry. So, I would join Ruth in asking that we delegate and trust the mayor to use that as he sees fit, but give him the right at least to use up to 75,000 each.
Mr. President, point of order.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Just so everybody knows here, that the ordinance 12-05 calls for each councilman to put up 1.345 million dollars, 1.345 million dollars per six district councilman, and the mayor times three, which equals 4 million 35,000, which altogether is going to be 12 million 105,000 dollars. Of that amount, it doesn't specifically say that 45,000 is going to be for the Henry units, or 75,000 is going to be for the Henry units, or if it's going to include paying for overtime to put the fourth ladder truck in there. It does not include that. As of right now, the way it reads, the mayor can spend it how he chooses to, unless we specifically put an amendment in here that we want to put more, or they want to use some of this money here for the ladder truck, or we want to use it to be 75,000 per councilman for the Henry units. So, anybody that would like to speak, not only is this about the Henry units, and it doesn't specifically say how much for the Henry units, but also for anything else that would be needed for the city and then for our budget.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
If I may, I'm just going to expand in terms of the crime and the crime issues in my district. You know, I'm hearing different, hearing different statements in regards to what's going on. The reality of it is, we need police, we need the fire. They're our first line of defense. They're, they're our first line of defense. And whatever we can do to assist them in making sure that the safety of our residents is first and foremost, that's what we should be looking at. Now, in terms of the forty-five thousand dollars for the police department, I don't know which councilman or whatever spent excessive amounts of money in regards to the Henry unit. I know what was designated when it started, what I put in every year. Only on one instance where there was a situation in my district where I requested for additional patrol for a particular incident, and that's when Ruby and Milton McClendon were killed on Field Street. So in saying that, um, I don't know, I'm not a police officer. The chief's not here. You know, so I don't know if forty-five thousand dollars is going to be enough to carry him through or is it going to be seventy-five thousand dollars? And that would be a question for the chief. Because he's the chief of police and his responsibility is to oversee the police officers of our city. So if he was here, that would be the question that I would pose to him as to whether or not forty-five thousand dollars is sufficient enough to do the job necessary to protect the citizens of our city. So is it forty-five or seventy-five? Either way, I don't have a problem with it. But I would like to know if that's sufficient enough, forty-five or seventy-five? And if somebody can answer that question for me, it would relieve, relieve a lot of stress for me wondering whether or not there's enough money to protect the safety of the residents of my district as well as the city of Hammond. And that's where I'm at. Now, we all know that we have to do something. We are having issues with our budget. We're not the only city. So let's not play games with ourselves and, and, and toss it around like this is going to go away. The reality of it is, we have to do something. And it's our responsibility as legislators of this city to make the necessary changes that's needed. But always think first, safety. Cause God forbid, I don't want one of my residents in my district to have a situation and there's no coverage or there's no officer available, uh, for whatever reason. The money's there. I don't think it should be a problem with us utilizing the resources that we have available for the safety of the residents of our city. I'm done.
Uh, Ed Lamelli, president of Hammond Firefighters, Local 556, uh, Island resident. A lifelong member of Hammond, or excuse me, for thirty-two years. Um, I just wanted to touch on that so I'm clear. Um, I think at this point, uh, the fire department or the, uh, is not a part of that, uh, certain, that particular ordinance. Um, I know there was some discussion, uh, before this meeting about allocating, uh, additional funds for the fire department, uh, considered, uh, truck number one, um, to be back in service. Um, I just, just a little point of information, um, we have been, uh, soliciting, not soliciting, excuse me, uh, going, uh, house to house. We've covered most of the city, not all of the city so far, about the closure of truck number one. Um, we as firefighters feel that this is an important asset to the, to the city. And with those additional funds that may be asked or requested from the council, uh, I would urge you to support that. Um, and I do understand that even if the council does support that in trying to allocate money to, uh, man truck number one, I know it's still the administration's position if they choose to do that or not. I would hope that you would urge the administration, if you choose to support that possibly amendment or to allocate money towards reopening truck number one and, and having the personnel on there three hundred and sixty-five days a, a year. Uh, it's very important, uh, so you know, um, if we haven't hit your district as of yet, we will be hitting your district and, and informing the public. But our response has been tremendous, uh, when it comes to the firefighters and that truck company being staffed again. Uh, we have talked to the city administration about grants that are out there that come from the federal government that is called the SAFER grant that have loosened up their, uh, parameters on paying back this money if you choose to use this grant for public safety. And, uh, there is, uh, less constrictive things when it comes to, uh, paying this money back or keeping the personnel. Um, you know, if you allocate that money that was talked about beforehand in this meeting, uh, I'm sure, uh, probationary firefighter, uh, the amount of money is significantly less than a private is. Um, it's, it's basically around forty thousand dollars. If, if the administration chooses not to fund the, uh, ladder truck and overtime, which we are totally okay with, there's not a person here that would say they would take that overtime. We're worried about the safety. And if, if they choose to hire additional firefighters to meet that shortfall of what we feel is adequate safety levels, and we're all for it. I just want to make sure that's clear. And I urge you and the administration to look at that SAFER grant. Uh, I think the cutoff might be February twenty-fourth of this month for the first round. There's another round that comes, uh, come summertime. And, uh, I've talked to the chief of staff about that. Uh, he was positive about the feedback. But like I said, I urge you to possibly, uh, allocate funds for that truck company. Every day that that is not in service, we're taking a gamble on someone's life. And I know that, uh, this council has been asked before to help supplement the Festival of Lakes, twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars. I think it's a better SAFER bet to have pub, public safety fully staffed than having a party for a week. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
At the defense of the mayor, I know that, uh, Daberton, who's the chief of staff, has already stated that the Festival of Lake, in terms of the Festival of Lake, we will not be doing the boat crew. Secondly, this grant, and my question about the grant, uh, February twenty-fourth is the cutoff date. Am I correct? Is there matching funds necessary for this particular grant? Zero?
This is the point, um, I don't want, the mayor wants to speak, I don't want to step over or talk in front of him. They probably know a little bit. We've got evidence and examples of the SAFER grant, how they loosen the parameters of this. You're not restricted to pay this money back. At one time, and Mr. Daberton can probably correct me if I'm wrong, at one time, you had a term limit when if you did hire additional firefighters, you had to keep them on additional, and if you hired them for two years on federal grant money, you had to keep them an additional two years. That has loosened up it from what I understand. And I've talked to Mr. Daberton about that. And you can also, if you lose firefighters to attrition, you don't have to, uh, hire additional firefighters and use lost firefighters to attrition. You do not have to rehire with the SAFER grant.
Now thoroughly would be in terms of, um, the reality of all this. And the reality of it is, is the only way that this could possibly occur with this body is if amendment is put in the language of the ordinance. And that would take the council approval and the mayor to sign off on it. My question would be as to whether or not the mayor is willing to agree to it because it's beating a dead horse. Are we going to be going in circles back and forth? And it's not, you know, and, you know, it would make our lives a lot easier if you guys could sit down. And I, and I know, I'm sure you've tried to reach out to the mayor and tried to discuss this issue several times. And I'm sure the mayor's tried to reach back as well, but, you know, it, it makes it a lot easier if you guys can come up with a compromise before it gets to the body. Because now you're saying, okay, you do this, the mayor may say, no, I'm not going to do this. And it's back and forth. So you're still not getting anywhere. And that, and, and, you know, who suffers? Mayor, you have the floor.
Mayor.
Um, I have a lot of, uh, first off, a danger to the public. Uh, Ed Lamelli is the guy that just stood up here and talked to you all, signed the contract. I, I find it hard to believe that he would sign a contract if there was endangering firefighter safety or endangering Hammond residents. I have a, a hard time believing that I could, because right now we're operating within the contract that he signed. And the body overwhelmingly approved. I mean, these are facts that these guys don't want to talk about. A, the SAFER grant gives you a two-year ride, true. But after two years, what do we do? We pick up the extra firemen for the next eighteen years or we lay them off? Three, I don't know if you guys, I mean, we've been talking about our budget problems for quite a while now. I think the last thing we should be talking about right now is bringing in six additional firefighters. It just seems like we're going the wrong way. Anything, we should be getting smaller as a unit, not getting bigger as a unit. Um, last, uh, as we all know, you guys are the budget, budgeting body of the city and I'm the executive and you guys could give extra money to the bailout ordinance and you guys could ask us to, to restaff truck number one. And we may do it, we may not do it. Quite frankly, I'll, I'll tell you, we won't. I'll take the extra money that you guys budget and I'll put it into our budget hole, which is over ten million dollars at this point. I won't restaff that truck. So you guys could put little footnotes on the ordinance, you guys could do all kinds of stuff. But the bottom line is, we made our decision, we tried to compromise with Ed Lamelli and the union, it didn't go anywhere. This is what we're doing.
I guess my question, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'm, I guess I'm going to have to take the lead tonight, no one else's willingness to say anything. But, um, how much is it exactly necessary to man that truck?
One point two million.
One point two million. I'm getting. See now, here I go again. I mean, I'm not a fireman.
Are we, are we having a conversation or are you talking to the audience?
But.
I could sit down.
You said one point two million dollars and then I'm hearing something else. So I, what's, in the reality, I don't know.
If I had to put a fire out, I wouldn't talk to Bobby Lindy because he's my controller. I would talk to these guys because these guys put out fires for a living.
I understand that.
But when they talk about money, I go to my controller. And last, if I remember correctly, Ed Lamelli came up and said, there's no way any of us are making a hundred thousand dollars. And Bobby Lindy whipped out a chart and proved that Ed Lamelli himself made a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Okay, so let's get, get our, we all have our jobs, okay? All right, Bobby's the controller. I think most people agree that this guy's pretty sharp, he knows what he's talking about, right? And he proved it to you. I mean, do we have to do the whole thing? We could play the tape. Want to do the whole last meeting again?
You're saying one point two million dollars.
Four men per shift. Each man makes, costs us about a hundred thousand dollars times three shifts.
Okay. Councilman Salinas.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, uh, Mayor, I would like to ask you a question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's just say you said that, uh, the truck is down, okay? Let's just say there's a fire. Is that truck, will it be used?
Oh, it could if it was a major fire like, uh, Jupiter, it's still maintained. It's still ready. Like a lot of the guys that talk to you, they live in areas where there's volunteer firemen. And what they do in the areas where a lot of these guys live is they have a fire truck that's sitting there and it's maintained. And if there's a big fire, you have to call the firemen up in these towns like Winfield and they have to drive to the firehouse where the truck is maintained. And then they get on the truck and they take it to the scene of the fire, okay? We would maintain our truck one like they maintain in a lot of the communities these guys live in, all right? If, in the meantime, we have three ladder trucks, which is more, I still challenge you, and I've been putting this out there. Tell me, anybody that lives in this area that has more fire coverage than Hammond, Indiana. We have forty firemen a day, which is allowable under the contracts, ready to answer your calls. Forty firemen a day. We have seven engine companies, three ladder trucks and four paramedic, uh, four ambulances staffed every day. Forty people a day. By the way, what does the contract say, the minimum staffing I could do on a daily basis? Says forty people a day. That's where we are. Why would Ed Lamelli sign a contract that said you can go down to forty men a day if it was dangerous? He wouldn't. This isn't dangerous. Sorry.
Okay, so the question is, the answer is yes.
Yes. Absolutely. It's being maintained every single day.
Mr. President. Councilman Higgs.
You're saying the truck is being maintained now, currently?
As we speak. It's ready to go out. It's not staffed with it, with four men per shift. If we had to call, let's say there was a Jupiter.
So how many people are, if that.
In that station right now, we have an engine staffed in that station. So there's three men per shift, nine men in that station.
Does someone have to be, uh, trained in that particular area to man that truck?
Well, they have to get to that level, yeah.
So if they have to get to that level, so how's it being manned up? Because you're saying the people, I understand.
If we had a Jupiter aluminum, Councilman, we would send the three ladder trucks we have or we'd leave one covering. And if we had to call out an additional truck, we could do like they do in other communities and say, hey, fireman Joe, uh, we have a big fire at Jupiter aluminum, I need you to report to station one and get on that truck and take it to the scene.
What's the response to that?
We'd already have three trucks there, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoosa.
For the, uh, the mayor, anybody can answer this. On, on those SAFER grants, um, the quickest I, I, I see, I mean, uh, here, here I believe this has to be passed or the first step has to be passed by, by February twenty-fourth. Councilman Higgs.
Who puts in for that grant, Councilman?
February twenty-fourth for the SAFER grants.
Who puts in for that?
The administration would have to do that.
Oh, really? Okay.
Okay, so if the, if this, uh, if, if this resolution had to be put in by February twenty-fourth, the next council meeting is February twenty-seventh. We would have to have an emergency meeting to have this in before February twenty-fourth to get the ball rolling on this. And what I'm looking at is the soonest we can probably man, I mean, the soonest we can, uh, get a couple of firemen from the SAFER grant would probably be twenty thirteen. This is twenty twelve. By the time we get everything applied for and get the money, the soonest we can get this money for additional firemen for the ladder truck would be twenty thirteen or twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. That's two years plus what we have the rest of this year. We have almost three years that a couple of firemen are going to want to retire. And, and these firemen possibly, if it's five or six firemen, they can probably, possibly stay on because additional firemen are going to retire. And, and we can, we can keep these firemen. If not, these, these guys already have two years of training, two years of working as a fireman that they can go apply somewhere else. And meanwhile, for twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, we had a fourth ladder truck. What I'm concerned about right now is if something happens close to Salinas's district and my fire truck from Hessville, hope God that, uh, forgive, the, hope that, that a train ain't blocking it. And if, if our ladder truck, uh, has to go down to Salinas's area because it's the closest, closest, uh, ladder truck because maybe the other ones are busy and my la, our ladder truck has to go to Salinas's area, what if something happens in, in, in my district? We're short a ladder truck. We're looking, we're looking at public safety here. We're looking at the lives of the firemen. We're looking at the lives of the citizens of the city of Hammond here. This is what we're looking at.
All right.
Twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen to have extra firemen and, and the money's going to come from grant money from the federal government? I would say, I would say jump on it. We should have the city attorney, I, I wish he had the ordinance right now so we can suspend the rules and we can pass the resolution today. But right now it doesn't look that way.
I agree.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
You know, this is my first time hearing about the grant. Uh, Mayor, have you been looking into the?
Yes, we have, Councilman. Absolutely looked into the grant. And we realized after two years, we'd have six more firemen and we'd have no money from the federal government and we'd have to carry those six firemen for eighteen years. And it wasn't worth it.
So what, what is the language of the grant?
How many times do I have to say the same thing?
I would like to see the copy of that grant then because the language, I really would like to read it and.
Good.
For myself.
You should.
If that's what it says.
Mr., Mr. President.
Councilman Henoosa.
We have, if we have an extra six firemen that worked for twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen and maybe two of them, two of them will stay on because two firemen retired. And the other four, if they're only on there for two years and if we have to cut, I mean, it can be in their next contract that, that it'll specify that if not enough people retire from the fire department, that the remaining firemen, because of retirees, the remaining firemen could be laid off. And they will, will know that when they get hired, that they could be laid off. And if they get laid off, like I said, there might be other cities looking for firemen at this time and, and, and they'll be skilled already for two years. I would say jump on it. Let's get this resolution going right now. If we can.
It's a grant.
Well, it's a resolution. We'd have to pass it under a resolution to go for the grant.
Has to be presented to the body first.
And it's not going to be today? And if it's the twenty-seventh, it's already too late.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
You can hear a pin drop now, ain't it? I guess, uh, I guess all I can say is that, uh, the mayor said that he's looking into the grant. Hopefully, uh.
He did say that, Councilman.
Wait, didn't you tell me, didn't you just say?
We looked into the grant.
Oh, you looked into the grant.
I didn't say I was looking, I said we looked.
You looked. And so you're not interested in the grant, that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So now we're clear. Thank you so much.
I thought we made it there like ten minutes ago.
No, I didn't understand you, but now I do.
Sorry, I apologize.
So I appreciate that. Clarity.
Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoosa.
Since, since the mayor's up there, maybe you can answer this question. As of right now, it says one million, three hundred and forty-five thousand. It doesn't specify. It doesn't specify that 45,000 is for the Henry units, it doesn't specify anything. This is for the way that you want to spend it. Unless, 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 we have a city attorney here and we have our attorney, unless, unless we specify on this ordinance that we specifically want a certain amount spent for, for example, a ladder truck, a ladder truck for the rest of the year, or more Henry units.
No, no.
No?
No. You're budgeting and we spend it. That's how it works. You're a councilman, you guys are a council, and we're the executive. You give us money and we spend it.
Mr. President. Councilman Higgs.
I don't wanna cut the mayor. You done, Mayor?
Yes, sir, sorry.
The reality of it is, we're the legislative body, and if we amend the ordinance, you have the opportunity to either pass it or not. And if you don't, then it comes back to this body and we can override you. If six of us stick together, we could be the mayor. Now that's the reality.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Order.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
More or less exactly what I said, right now, the mayor can spend it any way he wishes. But if five councilmen pass this amendment, pass an amendment, let's say, on this ordinance, and the whole thing passes, and even if the mayor vetoes it, then we have to come back with six votes to override it. I say, as of right now, Chico Hinojosa was elected for the sixth district to represent the people, and this is what the people want me to do. They want the safety of that ladder truck. They don't wanna wait for the crime to go up 11%. They don't want for the murder rate to go up in this city of Hammond. They, these additional funds, we can specify on this ordinance right now, that we wanna specify that it be used for ladder truck, a certain amount for the Henry units, this is what we want. And that's not even including this page right here. The extra Henry units, if we, if we up the 45, right now, it's not even 45,000, it's whatever the mayor wants. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put some amendments in here, and we'll see how the vote goes, but I'm gonna put amendment for a minimum of 75,000. That does not include these amounts right here, that each district councilman, except for the third district, I guess, because he's by the police station, he's got extra protection already, because he's got zeros on there. But last year, I don't know, I don't know if it's because it was the election year, that some of these councilmen put extra money to have extra police, "Oh, I'm putting extra police in the, in my, in my, in my district," what, for one year, election year? Chico Hinojosa didn't do it the election year? I've been doing it for a couple of years, just last year alone. Let me hear, I'm gonna, I'll let you hear these amounts. I'll start with the sixth district, 130,000, on top of the 75,000 that every councilman put up, 130,000 extra for Henry units, burglary, burglary police officers, gang officers, 19 SWAT raids it produced. In the fifth district, Councilman O' Pinker, $100,000. Fourth district, former councilwoman, Kim Poland, 190,000 on top of that 75,000. Third district, zero. Second district, Councilman Salinas, $70,000 extra in police overtime, probably for the gang unit, and I, I think I heard there was a, there was a couple raids out there, too. The first district, I think it's the first time, I don't know, maybe he can tell us different, but the first district put an additional 131,000. Was this because it was election year? Not for Councilman Hinojosa. I'll let everybody else speak about what they think. I know Kim Poland, for a fact, has been putting it for a couple of years. I know I have been putting extra Henry units in the gang unit and also into the burglary unit. You know what? And it produced. I don't know, maybe people are sick and tired of hearing Chico Hinojosa say, "You know what? We had 19 SWAT raids in Hessville." And not only were they in Hessville, they bordered Councilman O' Pinker's border, they bordered across from Kennedy Avenue into Councilman Higgs's border over there, but I didn't care. You know what? Those drug dealers were from Hessville, they were from across the street into the third district, they were from across the street on Kennedy Avenue into the fifth district, they stretched into East Chicago, they stretched into Gary, they stretched into the other side of Hammond into Robertsdale, into Illinois. We put, we put, we put a big strain on these drug dealers and gangs, like, I'm gonna repeat, like the Andrade's, gonna recruit 20, 30 gang members here in Scott and Morton Elementary, gonna recruit them, and then they're gonna start doing gang graffiti, they're gonna start robbing houses. Is this what we want? We put a good stop to it, and we need to continue. Even if we don't put these huge amounts in there, okay? Chico Hinojosa can probably relax now. 19 SWAT raids in Hessville? I think we, I think we put a pretty, pretty good dent on there.
Councilman Hinojosa, you made your point.
Thank you.
Let's let some of these other folks speak so we can get on, if we're gonna do some amendments, we'll do some amendments to the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
I wanted to clarify one issue. I wanted to thank Bobby Lindy for coming in, first off. He cannot come up here and speak because he had Lasik surgery today, okay? We were scrambling on numbers, so Bobby just ran him in. We have $955,000 built into the police department overtime budget, okay? And this ordinance you all have, is 405,000 built into this. We've built 450,000 into the police department, or excuse me, into the gaming budget and police department overtime, and the general fund budget that was passed by you, there was 100,000 in that. So for a total of 955,000, this is the number we sat down with, Brian Miller and John Doty, the chief and the assistant chief, and asked them what they could do it with, and this is the number they gave us, this is the number we gave to them. I'd like to point something out. I took over as mayor January 1st, 2000, excuse me, 2004. On that day, when I took office, police department overtime budget for the entire year, for the entire department was 200,000. Even cutting them down this year, they got 955,000 in police overtime. So under my watch, police department overtime's gone up 450%, which is good for residents, it's good for the officers themselves, and it's worked. We lowered our crime stats quite a bit in the years, okay? We wanna keep that momentum going, but at the same time, no, no offense to Councilman Hinojosa, but what was happening was, you get into bragging rights, like, Councilman Hinojosa says, "I gave 180,000," and then Councilwoman Poland says, "Well, I gave 195,000," and then somebody else jumps in, "I'm gonna give two and a quarter." We don't budget like that in government. We budget, on a budget, we set at the beginning of the year and we go through the year. Councilman, you're bragging right now, and you're playing politics, okay? And that's part of the reason we're doing what we're doing, is to stop this kind of games that you're playing right now. You're playing games, admit it. Good, thank you.
Hi, Council Mike Hall, 1224 177th Street, Hammond. First, I wanted to clear up a couple things. It's not four people per truck, it's three, so you could take a quarter of that cost out of there, minimum. Second, I wanted to bring up, there was a fire the other day, and I did it last month's union meeting, or I'm sorry, council meeting, and I'm gonna bring it up at this one also. We have a lot of industry up north, the Robertsdale area, the current place that used to be Sarastar, Amazo, whatever you guys remember it as. There was a fire up there last Wednesday. We had Truck Two, which is from Robertsdale, respond to that fire. It was the only fire rig that made it there, because of railroad tracks. The only one. Three guys fighting that fire. I know we have some councilmen up here who've worked in industry. We had to have some of those people who were the workers at that industry helping fight the fire. I don't know what kind of liability that is, you know, it's terrible that they had to do it, but regardless, it happened again. And every time we have a council meeting, and I'm here, I'm gonna bring up an instance where this is happening. And every time it happens, it's a gamble. And eventually, we're gonna roll the dice and lose. I'm not saying, you know, that you have to do this or have to do that, I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just telling you, that's, that's the fact of it, that we are gambling every time. And I'm gonna bring up instances every single council meeting, that this is happening, because it's happening that often. When that fire broke out at Cargill, the first district was, their truck was tied up, they had nothing else left there. So now they had from Chicago Avenue all the way to the Horseshoe Casino uncovered as far as fire protection. Everybody was stuck by trains. We have members here that'll verify it, they were stuck by the trains. So, for anybody to downplay it and say that it's not happening or it's safe, it's just not the case. And I invite anybody to look at some of the dispatch recordings, look at some of the dispatch tapes and find out for yourself. The SAFER grant is 100% funded. It's like getting two, it's like getting free firemen for two years. What might happen after that two years? That would be a tough choice. I give it to the mayor, that would, that'd be a terrible choice if you had to lay those guys off. But I can tell you, we have about 10 guys ready to retire in the next two years. If they were replaced by six, that would be an improvement. It's free money. The federal grant is saying, here, here's up to $100,000 salary and benefits to bring these guys on. It's a no-brainer to me, it's a no-brainer to the guys back here, but it's just something to think about, thank you.
Can I get a copy of that grant?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else would like to speak?
Mr. President. There seems to be a dispute over truck staffing. If we staffed three men per shift to a truck, each fireman, by the time they get to a truck, they have plenty of vacation built up. Each fireman gets six weeks of vacation. If we only had three people on a fire rig, you'd have one on vacation almost the entire year, maybe even two, and guess what we'd be doing? We'd have to fill it with three per shift and we'd be paying overtime. So what we do instead is we schedule four per shift, because one of them's always gone. They're on sick leave, they're on vacation, they're off doing something. And so when that one person's on vacation, you got four persons on a truck, that leaves you with three, and they could safely operate a truck. That's why we schedule four. So when you, if we did three per shift, we'd be spending 900,000 plus a ton of overtime. Or you could just do it the right way and staff it with four, and pay the 1.2 million.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
I, I got, I got some figures there, if you, if you listen to the back room, I kinda guessed what the amount was that's in our budget for police overtime. In our budget for 2011, I guessed that it was 400,000. I didn't know exactly, I didn't have the book with me, that it was 400,000. It was 450,000, I was pretty close. So for 2012, I'm gonna ask the mayor, how much are we gonna spend on the Henry units on top of this 450,000? Well, last, last year was 450,000. What's budgeted, in the budget this year is probably about the same, how much extra are we gonna spend on Henry units out of that 1.345 million?
Uh, Councilman, uh, Mr. President?
All right.
We have, in the proposed ordinance 12-5, which we're contemplating right now, 405,000 built into that. Built into the gaming budget, we built in 450,000 of Henry unit money. And in the general fund budget that you all approved, there was 100,000. When you add those all together, it's 955,000, which is a tick below where they were last year, okay? But it's 450% higher than it was when you and I took over, Councilman Hinojosa, because you took over the same year I did. 200,000 to 955,000. So the police department's not very upset with the amount of overtime they're getting. It's more than they've ever gotten in their entire careers. Maybe, I don't know, you know? It's more than they've ever had in their entire careers. So when Brian Miller and John Doty talked to me about this, they said, "955 grand? We could work it, Mayor, and we could do it right, and we'll do it efficiently, and maybe they'll just be smarter. Maybe if it's a Sunday night and it's snowing, maybe we don't put six Henry unit officers on the street. Maybe we do it smarter, and, and do it like a budget." That's what we're trying to do, Councilman Hinojosa.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Now, now that I have the figure of 450,000 from last year, 450,000 from the budget, and 75,000 per, per councilman, and the mayor times three, was 675,000. And then the individual, which may, maybe because it was election year, was 621,000. If you total all that together, it's 1,746,000 that we spent on Henry units, police overtime in the city of Hammond. This year, it looks like we're gonna spend 955,000 altogether. So it's almost less than half, it's almost less than half, or, or, it's about half, about what we spent last year, what we're gonna spend this year. I just hope, I just hope that everything goes right and crime doesn't go up 11%, that murders don't go up, because we don't have enough Henry units. I just thought, I'd make it clear that 2011, that's what we spent on police overtime, 1.746 million dollars.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would just like to weigh in. You know, when I won the election, everyone was so happy, they said, "Oh, congratulations, Councilman Emerson, on your victory, and by the way, you have half the gaming money your predecessors, successors have had, not just the last four years." So with that, the celebration was short-lived. But as I look at this, there's a couple words that stood out at, you know, a meeting I was at, fiscal emergency, that's what the city's in. And so I look at what I wanted to do and what I can't do. I have half the money my predecessor had four years ago. Now, I didn't run for office, and I don't think any of the district councilmen up here ran for office just to give away 2.3 million a year, but I do think it makes our job easier. And who wouldn't wanna have that luxury? The fact of the matter is, we don't have the luxury, and so I am looking, and I met with Mr. Distottini about some things I wanted to do, and I want the people of fourth district to hear this, I can't do them. I don't have the gaming money. That, to me, it's interesting, we mentioned half the money just a couple of minutes ago, that's what we, we have less than half as district councilmen. I happen to be the rich one, I have, I have more, but it's still less than half of what my predecessor had. So, I have to say that we are, we're going to reevaluate, or I'm going to reevaluate what I wanted to do, and so therefore, right now, I'm looking at what I can do, not what I wanted to do. And I want the people of fourth to know that, and be patient. Another thing this, this ordinance says, it's 2012 only. I think you gotta look at that. So that's all I wanted to say, I wanted the people to know that I'm operating with half, less than half, of what the last eight years due to the luck of having the gaming vote. The unlucky part is the 1, 2, 3 property tax caps, the general economy, the boat revenue going down, all the things that we've talked about, so.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
Piggybacking off of what Councilman Emerson said, you know, the fact is, Councilman, we're doing a bailout for the 2012 ordinance, or 2012 year right now with gaming. If this passes, obviously, our gaming budget, I mean, our, our general fund budget'll look better for this year. If we don't fix the fundamental problems, though, guess what we're gonna be doing next year? We're gonna be in here talking about tough things, and you guys are gonna be talking about how little gaming money you have to get stuff done in your districts. If we don't fix the budget problem, you're not gonna have any gaming money to get anything done. That's something that's, we're fixing whatever, the damage that already occurred with the bailout. If you don't fix the problem, we're gonna be back here next year talking about another bailout. That's what I'm trying to do, Councilman, you think I wanna fight with the firemen right now? No, I don't. We have no choice, Councilman Hinojosa. I haven't heard a single answer from you on how to fix the budget problem. You've been a councilman for eight years. I haven't heard a single recommendation on how to fix this. I see a lot of pandering, a lot of grandstanding, not one recommendation, Councilman Hinojosa. How do you suggest, if it's not this, how do you suggest to fix it, Councilman Hinojosa? You've been a councilman for eight years.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Since I've been on the council, this is not the first occurrence where we had to bail out. Certainly, uh, I feel the same way in terms of getting projects done in my district. I try to get them as done, done as quickly as possible in regards to street infrastructure, sidewalks, uh, lighting, and everybody's at your doorstep and calling you and saying, I want my street done, I want some lights. I want my sidewalk fixed. And of course, the sidewalk is much cheaper than trying to get a whole street done, but the average street alone is close to a million dollars. A million dollars just to do one street, depending on the size. Now, if you're talking about a small street like 164, maybe a half a mil. So the reality of it is, is that we're in a crisis, and you have to do what's necessary when you're in a crisis. So my problem is not the fact that we have to spend some dollars in terms of the budget now, but in the future. Next year, what are the people gonna be saying? Well, I want my street done, I want my sidewalks done, can you get this done, Councilman? Can you get that done? This is a situation that's been ongoing. The reality of it is, it's not gonna just drop out of the air and then go away. We gotta deal with the situation that's at hand. That's reality. And it's, it hurts me to know that I've got to give up half of my casino dollars, but it, I'm sure Councilor McQuinskey feels the same way. We all feel that way. But the reality of it is, is in order for the city to run, we gotta do something. So, you know, suggestions have been made, and one of the suggestions, the mayor, that, you know, I don't want anyone to think that, that, oh, you're patting the mayor on his back, because we don't always see eye to eye. But the reality of it is, is that when you're right, I'm gonna stand up for right, and when you're wrong, I'm gonna stand up, when you, and let you know that you're wrong. Now, the reality of it is, is that one of the things that's gonna be cut out is the UEA. How much money is that gonna save the city? I mean, these are the things we all gotta look at, and we all in this together. It's not just one-sided. We're, we're all in this together, and we gotta come up with a remedy to solve the problem. It's just like when you got a bad kid in your house, you don't know what to do with the kid, you gotta come up with a, a solution. I guess what? Put that kid out. We got to deal with the situation. No need to second-guess it. It's reality. And I'm hoping that even after this year, the next year, we're in a better position than we were this year. Because again, as I stated previously, I don't enjoy spending half of my casino dollars. There are a number of streets that I still would like to see done in a number of parks that I would like to see improved. MLK, MLK for one. But the reality of it is, you gotta do what you gotta do. And I'm not against giving up some of my casino money. But I also would like to know in the future that we don't have to be at this same point of dealing with the same issues over and over again. We had to do the self-insurance fund. You know, now we're back again because we're in a deficit. You know? And the reality of it is, if people don't buy homes and pay taxes, that's what we dealing with. Bottom line. So, you know, and again, I, I still stand firm when I say, public safety is a priority. I always felt like that. Now, Councilman Hinojosa just read off the number of district council persons that spent beyond the amount of money that was already appropriated in the beginning of the year for additional public safety. I wasn't one of those councilmen. I watch how I spend the money throughout my district, and it's not just in one area. My district goes all the way to Kennedy Avenue. I have all types of ethnic groups in my district, black, white, Hispanic, purple, blue, green, the whole, now, I treat them all equal. No one's treated differently nowhere where you live. As long as you respect me, you can best believe I'm gonna respect you. So in saying that, I mean, the reality of it is, is that we gotta deal with this situation. And what is it gonna take to deal with the situation so that we're not back here next year dealing with it? Now, my question now is, and maybe the mayor can help me understand, because when there was a situation with the health department, and now we have a health clinic in our district, which, I appreciate that, it's at the Phoebe Stadium Center, I appreciate it totally. Anytime you can provide services for people, insulin, people that need assistance, it's always a plus. But a number of years back, when the health department was taken away from the city, and Mayor, we tried to spend money, we tried to give money in regards to the health department to keep it in our city. You would not allow me or my colleagues to get that money to the necessary resources that were needed at that particular time. And that's why I say we're back at square one and where we're gonna be at when it's all said and done. Because at the end of the day, if he doesn't agree to it, and we don't have six votes, we're going right back where we started from. So that's why it's so important to communicate and compromise and try to come up with a reasonable solution to the problem. We could debate this issue all night back and forth, but at the end of the day, if the votes ain't there, it ain't gonna happen.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
One more thing on the point of order. I do not play politics with this job. I'm very serious about this job and what I do. The mayor mentioned, not once, Mr. Hinojosa, have you mentioned how we're going to, uh, resolve the problem of the 12 million dollars could be a possibility, that could be 12 million dollars again next year in 2013. State Line Energy, little by little, gradually, is going to be out of the tax system, and we're gonna be short more millions. So that 12 million could be 13 or 14 million. What are we gonna do? You say, well, what, what, what are we gonna do? Has anybody else besides Councilman Hinojosa specified, uh, uh, come out with some figures? This is what we're gonna do if this happens next year? Nobody has. Nobody has. Not just Chico and Hinojosa. Nobody has. What else can we do? Uh, let me see, I'm, I'm just gonna take some guesses out there. Uh, there could be politicians out there that are probably gonna vote for a county income tax and bail this out, uh, or is it that we're going to cut 50 firemen in 2013, 60 police officers? Is that what's gonna happen? I don't know. What other choices do we have? If we're gonna be 12 million, 13 million, 14, again, next year, of course, we're probably gonna use casino money. We're not gonna let, we're not gonna let public safety go down after we just passed a resolution last meeting, that public safety is number one. But is the solution, uh, uh, Mr. Hinojosa, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Spitali, anybody, is a solution to cut 50 firemen, 60 police officers? That's where most of our money is. Are we gonna do that? I don't think so. We're not gonna let public safety. Here, we need more police officers, and we need more Henry units. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna cut police officers? I don't think so. Thank you. And, and, and one more, one more thing. Of course, we passed a budget, how did we not know that we're pa, here, we're pa, we passed a budget of 55 million? How did we not know, all of us, that we were gonna be 15 to 18 million, whatever it is, that we were gonna be 15 to 18 million? We passed a budget during the election year? I'm not an accountant, I'm not a CPA, I don't work for the county, I don't work for the state, I don't know what kind of money's coming, maybe I, maybe I should've knocked on some doors on the county. How does it look, and maybe I'll be prepared for next year, how does it look for 2013? So we could be pa, better prepared, instead of just passing a budget for 55 million, and then we're short 15 million? Now, we got a budget of 30 million. Are we gonna be able to live on a budget of 30 million? And it's not our fault. It's not the mayor's fault, it's not my fault, it's not your fault. 1%, 2%, 3% is hitting everybody real hard. Real hard to a point where they're making, downstate is making this area over here suffer. Indianapolis, those, doesn't have to worry. Indianapolis will get money from the, from, from the governor. Where are we gonna get it? Well, we got the casino money. We could only use the casino money so far. I would love that all the, all that casino money be used for infrastructure. But I do not want public safety to go down the drain. I'm gonna be here next year, and the year after that, and then the year after, I'm not moving out of here. I'm looking to the future. I'm looking to the future of what's gonna happen in the next, uh, next year and the next couple of years. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Public speaking is now closed. I need a motion to go back to regular order of business?
Make a motion to go back to regular order of business?
All those in favor?
I oppose. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Councilman Higgs, second it. Okay, we were on ordinance 12-5. Councilman Hinojosa was in the process of amending it. That's where we left off.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
We are in, uh, back to ordinance 12-5. I'd like to make an amendment in page one, like I said, because this, this ordinance doesn't say how we're gonna spend it. I'm hoping, uh, maybe after the meeting or under, uh, um, uh, into, when we consider letters out, hopefully, hopefully as we start spending this money, uh, they can give back to the council on how we're spending this money. So I'd like to amendment, put an amendment in there. That, in the, uh, fifth paragraph, where it says now, therefore, bless you, that the, that the 1.345 million be 1.408,500. And then at the end of the fifth paragraph where it says ordinance, I want in there to amend in, I want to amend in, that of the 1.408,500 times nine, which equals 12 million 649,500, that 976,000 dollars, 976,501 will be specifically used for, 301,500 to be used for the fourth ladder truck, and 675,000 to be used for the Henry units. I so move.
What was them numbers again? Mr. President, what was the numbers?
Mr. President, want me to repeat that? Yes.
Yes, Councilman Hinojosa, go over them numbers again.
In the fifth, in the fifth paragraph, I want to amend in that of the 1.345 million, that it be 1.408, 1,408,500. And that of, and, and then at the end of the ordinance, that of the, amend in that of the 1,408,500, times nine equals 12 million 649,500, to be used specifically for 301,500 to be used for the fourth ladder truck, and 675,000 to be used for the Henry units. Let me just make a point of order here, that the 675,000 is an increase from 75,000 to 45,000, which it really doesn't say 45,000 on here. I so move with that amendment.
Second.
There's amendment, amendment on the floor, first by Councilman Hinojosa, second by Councilman Higgs. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mayor.
I, I don't want to jeopardize the entire bailout because it's so important to the future operations of the city, every department, not just the fire department. I know that there's a motion and a second to increase the amount of gaming revenue from the district councilman, which is three times as high for me, and that's fine. If that's what you approve, I plan to sign it. However, I'm gonna use that money for the bailout, 100%. It's gonna go straight into our budget. We have over a $10 million hole left from this year. I don't plan on reactivating that truck, I just wanna make it clear. You could put language in there, it's a, as a request, you know? If you wanna increase the size of the bailout, that's fine. But I will use that money towards the bailout, towards bailing out our budget, not reactivating a truck that's redundant.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Then at that point, Mayor, then you would be violating your legislative duties, because how could you, if, if, if the ordinance is passed and the language states that the money is to be designated for a particular, uh, department, and you sign it? And that's one thing if you don't sign it, but if you sign it, it becomes law.
No, that's not true, Councilman. It's unconstitutional what you're talking about. You can't.
Burge.
Go ahead and pass it, Councilman, and see how it works out.
Well, my opinion, you know, first of all, the council can't appropriate money unless it's requested by the executive. And secondly, the executive is limited to the amount of the appropriation, but he doesn't have to, uh, spend the whole appropriation. So I think, I think the mayor put it in different words, but I think essentially, he's saying if you appropriate it, it would not be spent.
Agreed. Thank you, Colin, thank you. So basically, what Mr. Burge is saying, if I may be so bold, is you guys could put the money in there, and we could choose not to spend it under Mr. Burge's interpretation.
But the reality of it is, the ordinance states how much money is to be spent.
Well, we'll take it, well, first off, let's see if it's successful, okay? And if it is successful, let's see if I sign it. And if I do sign it, let's see if you're right.
Well, what Burge just stated is that the legislative, the legislative body has to approve it, but you as an administrator have to put it in.
You gotta vote in a second, so call for the vote. See how it works out.
Any other discussion? Councilman Markovich.
I, I would just like to thank, uh, the council. I hope they vote in favor of it, because it's 1.345 million dollars times nine, it should've been six, so the council in large has picked up 1.45 million dollars. Man, I've been waiting for that money now for 12 years, so hell, I'm, I'm happy as hell.
Wait a minute, did I rescind my second?
Councilman Higgs, is that a rescind?
No. The reality of it is, and I need some clarity, and, and I have to question Burge again. Burge, what are you saying in terms of, he's made some changes in this particular ordinance? I didn't prepare it, you didn't prepare it, the legal department in the city prepared this ordinance. The numbers state how the money is to be designated. Chico has made an amendment to change the ordinance. By law, is it acceptable if we should pass this with, uh, anonymous consent?
What I was saying is, under Indiana state law, the executive is not required to spend the full amount of the appropriation. So if, if you appropriate a million dollars and he doesn't spend any of it.
It goes back to the general.
Not violating the ordinance, because the ordinance is the maximum that can be spent. It's not the required minimum.
So even, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
So even if we go beyond this amount and, and amend it in, he still does not have to spend that money. It'll go back, it will revert back to the general fund.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
Mr. Burge, even if it says specifically for those areas, because I know we spend it on those areas.
Well, you know, I think what got confused is he really can't spend it on something else, but he does not have to spend the money on anything. You know, if the council appropriates the money, he can reduce it, he cannot increase it.
So in other words, you're saying, even though, let, let's say it's increased and voted in, it's set specifically for those areas, but the mayor doesn't have to spend it, and it can go back into the general fund or back into our casino fund?
It's not, back into the general fund. General.
Back into the general fund, so we would take your casino revenue if I chose not to spend it and put it back in the general fund, yes.
So we'll go back to the general fund so we can use it for the 2013 budget, where we're gonna be short.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Clerk Golick on the amendment 12-5.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
No.
Vines.
No.
Calwinski.
No.
Salinas.
No.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Hinojosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Motion fails by four.
Back to the original motion.
Back to the original. Ordinance 12-5. Any discussion on the original ordinance 12-5?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinojosa.
I'd like to make an amendment. In the fifth paragraph, that the 1.345 stay the same, that the same paragraph that I put in there after ordinance, uh, state that, that 976,501 will be specifically used for 301,500 to be used for the fourth ladder truck, and 675,000 to be used for the Henry units. Reason I say that is because, like, right, like I said, it don't say 45,000 to be used for Henry units, it don't say 100,000. Right here, it says 675,000, 75,000 for councilperson.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
If, uh, if this were to turn out to be true, we didn't just pull numbers out of thin air. I mean, so if you're gonna earmark part of the bailout that was going to bail out our budget, and you give a million dollars to the fire department so that they could run their fourth engine, or, excuse me, their fourth truck, that's a million dollars I have to cut out of our budget. I'd love to hear recommendations from you, Councilman Hinojosa, on who should lose, because somebody loses. Somebody loses under this. So you are pandering to the fire department right now, and I'm sure they're very happy with you, okay? Now, which department loses, Councilman? Which department heads do you wanna sell? I need a million dollars out of your budget, because Chico needed some support from the fire department. I mean, I would love recommendations. You have all kinds of ideas on how to spend money. I'd love recommendations on going the other way, Councilman, you've been on the council for eight years. I mean, I would appreciate some of your expertise.
I have a motion, and was there a second? No, I don't have a second yet, do I?
No, there was not a second. Is there a second on the amendment for 12-5? Is there a second? Amendment fails.
You didn't ask it three times. You're in a hurry.
One more time, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Markovich. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Is this about a ladder truck? Is this, but what, where are we at here with the numbers? I mean, the mayor's saying that the numbers are, are not gonna fit with the amount of money. I mean, I'm not an expert in terms of, and I'm not, certainly not the city controller, and I think he was sick, but he came out, but, I mean, in reality, is this going to be enough money, if we should pass this, to man the truck? That, that's my question. Can somebody answer that question?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
900,000? Not even close. We're three or 400,000 short. Because you're going to put nine men on a rig, one of them's going to go on vacation, one of them's going to get hurt, we're going to be filling it with overtime, 900,000 is bare bones to run that truck. In reality, you need closer to 1.2, Councilman Higgs. This isn't even close. Let's be honest, this is games. We're playing games right now.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
So Councilman Higgs notes, I'll repeat it, of the 976,501, 301,500 will be used for the fourth ladder truck, for that overtime, and 675,000 will be used for the Henry units, which is 75,000, or 10 percent, for Councilman, the mayor, times three.
75, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
So we got 75,000 divided by six. But how are you coming up with the nu, I'm trying to crunch the numbers in terms of this ladder truck.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
I'll show Mr., I'll show Mr. Higgs. 75,000 times nine. Councilman Higgs, 75,000 times nine is 675,000. Of the 301,500, that's 33,500 times nine, which equals 301, for a total of 976,500. That's where those numbers come from. Times nine is, each councilman, that's six, and the mayor times three, because he has 30 percent, that's times nine. 75,000 times nine is 675. 33,500 times nine is 301,500, for a total of 976,500.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
Okay. I was just told I have $9,000 left. If I'm going to pitch in 75, where am I going to get the money? Out of my gaming money, after the 1.3.5 that we're giving.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Did I just hear Councilman Salinas say he only got $9,000 left?
That's true, Councilman Higgs.
Where he getting his numbers from? Well, I'd like to know how much does him, where's the control at?
He had Lasik surgery today. He came in nonetheless.
Well, I mean, how's, I don't have, I'd like to know my numbers as well, then, if that's the case.
Councilman Higgs, you have plenty of time to prepare for a meeting.
I'm prepared.
A lot of this is going on on the floor. You writing down numbers?
This is true. Okay, you're saying 1.2 million dollars.
Why don't we just vote on this? Instead of arguing.
If that's what you want. You don't want to debate the issue and try to get an understanding, it's fine with me, Mayor.
Okay, vote.
I'm trying to help you.
Call for the vote.
But if, if you want to sit up here and act like you got it all in the bag, then hey, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Mr. President, call for the vote. Amendment.
Call for the amended vote on ordinance 12-5. Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
No.
Vines.
No.
Calwinski.
No.
Salinas.
No.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Hinoza.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Motion fails, 5-4. Amended motion.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
I'd like to make another amendment. I'm not going to make an amendment for the 600, for the Henry units, because I'm going to have trust in the mayor that, that crime is not going to go up, and, and everything's going to be fine and dandy. But I will like to make an amendment, each councilman here is putting up 1.345 million. I'm going to ask you for another 33,500, times nine, which will be 301,500, for public safety. This is, this is for public safety, for the safety of, of the, of the firemen, for the safety of the citizens. Don't forget, Mr. Salinas, the, the ladder truck was eliminated in your district, I mean, it could have been anywhere, but a ladder truck has to go from one side of town to the other side of town, leaving another side of town without a fire truck. This is public safety. We live in Hammond, Indiana, where we're the train capital of the world.
I don't think we had a second, Clerk Golick.
He's still making his motion.
He's still making the motion.
301,000, 301,500 is very small compared to the 1.345 per councilperson. This is only 33,500 per councilman. I think 301,500 in firemen's overtime for the fourth ladder truck is plenty, and hopefully we can change our mind on, on this, on this grant of a resolution that we'll have to have an emergency meeting for, so we can pass this grant, so we can have extra firemen in 2013 and 2014. So I'd like to make an amendment, that in that same paragraph, after ordinance, that we amend in that we, oh no, on the 1.345, I'd like to add on 33,500 to that amount.
33.5?
33.5. My cop layer right here. 508,7. So in other words, that 1.345 will be 1.378, 1,378,500.
That's correct.
Okay? And after ordinance, I'd like to amend in that 301, that, of the, of the amount, that 301,500 be used for the fourth ladder truck.
There's amendment to 12-5. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Markovich. Roll call vote, Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
You're going to ask for discussion?
Hold on. Discussion, yes. Mayor, you were first.
I think Councilman Hinoza has spent more money than I have available to me. He obviously isn't checking balances before he throws amendments out there. I, I know for a fact I don't have over 100,000, and I think Councilman Hinoza just spent 100,000 with mayor's gaming money, and there's not even close to 100,000 in that account. So I have no idea how he plans on making this work. Just wanted to throw that at you before you vote on this amendment, I have no idea how Chico's coming up with these numbers.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
In due respect to Councilman Hinoza, we all understand that you are very concerned about safety. We get it. We get what you're trying to accomplish. Probably not many of us in here are accountants, but, boy, it, it, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that we have a 55 million budget. We're 15 million short, that we're trying to run the city, the city with 15 million. We, we could close City Hall from the mayor down to the janitor, but, boy, we'd sure be safe. We wouldn't have any lights on in the city, we wouldn't have any trash pickup, we wouldn't have our streets plowed, we wouldn't have anything, but we'd be safe. So, I, I, I don't know, I don't know. All, all I'm asking for is somebody to be practical here. I, I, I don't, I don't understand. We don't have the money. We don't have the funding. We're trying to make do with what we have. That's all I have to say.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
Practical, or is it safe? The safety of our citizens and the safety of our firemen. We don't want to, we don't, we don't want to have to knock on the door of a fireman's wife and let him know that he passed away, because seconds counted, and we didn't have a fire truck, or ladder truck available, because, because of the train tracks. 33,500 per councilman is a small amount compared to 1,345,000. 1,345,000. 1,345,000, that's a lot of money. For 33,500, we can put the ladder truck back and, and use it until it runs out, but at least, you know what? We did everything we tried for one more year, and hopefully, hopefully, we can do something about 2013 and 2014 very quickly with a resolution, to get this safer grant as soon as possible. That's all I got. Oh, and by the way, the 33,500 is for each councilman times six, the mayor times three, which equals 100,500.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote on amendment 12-5.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
No.
Vines.
No.
Calwinski.
No.
Salinas.
No.
Higgs. Emerson.
No.
Hinoza.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, motion fails, 5-3, one absent.
Now, roll call vote on the original ordinance 12-5.
Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Hinoza.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Motion 12-5 passes 9 to 0.
Ordinance 12-06, sponsored by Councilman Calwinski, and ordinance of the city of Hammond, Indiana, concerning improvements by the Board of Sanitary Commissioners through the issuance and sale of bonds and other matters connected therewith.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
I move for final passage of 12-06.
Second.
First by Councilman Calwinski, second by Councilman Spitali.
Mr. President.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, if we could just allow them to leave out, and then we can continue with our business, the firemen. I think Janet has to use, you want to do a recess? Because she's got to use the washer. Oh, okay. Well, we finna vote on something here. I see you leaving out, Mother Burns, I'll, I'll see you later.
Okay, any more discussion on 12-6?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
This ordinance concerns improvements by the Board of Sanitary Commissioners through the issuance and sales of bonds, roughly in the amount of about 77 million, was discussed with some Q and A during the committee meeting and caucus before this meeting.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think the reality of this piece of legislation to this body is that if we don't pass it, we could possibly end up in litigation in the federal courts for not passing it, and I think that it's, it's needed at this present time, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Calwinski.
This all originated in 1999, and has come to a head for a lot of cities, and the DOJ is no longer going to sit and wait, and that towns, cities like ours and urban areas have to do this at some point in the very near future, or face action by the DOJ.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hinoza.
For anybody that was at the back room, a question was asked, besides this bond for the next 20 years for 77 million, I asked, how much, how much do we have in bonds right now? How many bonds, and how much money in bonds do we owe right now? And that amount was another 70 million that we owe in about a half million, I mean, in about, I think it was like six bonds totaling 70 million. So if this is passed, which I'm sure probably needs to be passed, we're past, I mean, we're going to wind up owing the city Hammond Sanitary District 77 million for this one, and 70 million that we owe right now. Also, it was discussed that the user fee that we pay for, was it for the Senator District, could increase. How much could it increase? I don't know. Could it be $5, $10, $20, $100? I don't know. Does anybody, anybody from the Senator District have, I'm sure you have public accountants that probably know how much it's probably going to increase? I mean, we already know what the figures are. We owe 70 million in bonds, have about a half, about six bonds or whatever it is, and another 77 million. So you said there's probably going to be an increase in, in the user fee. How much is it probably going to increase? I'm sure you have accountants, you have people who did design all this, I'm sure we got to know, how much increase in user fees are we going to get?
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, could I get somebody from, I mean, this is an important, this is an important ordinance, or can we, do we know how much it's going to increase approximately?
As you recall, Councilman, the statute provides that in the event the Sanitary District chooses to adopt a resolution amending the users, sue or user charges, they don't go into effect until approved by an ordinance adopted by the legislative body.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
So what Attorney Allegrini just stated to us is that before any fees go up, it will come before this body, and it will be our opportunity to question them as to how, when, and what to do.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
It says here in the first whereas, "to construct the improvements described in the board's declaratory resolution adopted on December 13th and confirmed on January 10th, together with all the necessary affrontances related to the improvements in equipment noted as the project." Were we given copies of that, the project?
I'm not sure what was in your pack, Councilman Markovich.
I, I, you know, I mean, I missed, you know, the earlier meeting, you know, because it was, I don't have any of that information, or what the project is. I don't even see, well, we had Mr. Unger here, but, you know, what did Munster decide on this? Because they're, they're.
They're part of the Senator District.
I know they are, they're one-fifth, but do we have a declaratory resolution from Munster Town Council?
They don't, the fiscal body of the unit, which is in this case, the Hammond Sanitary District, the fiscal body is you, in this case. We don't have to go to the Town Board of Munster, correct? Attorney Allegrini?
The statute that requires the, which doesn't allow non-elected persons to, to borrow tax, to issue tax-backed bonds, only requires that the legislative body that originally created the special taxing district, in this case, the Hammond Sanitary District, needs to, needs to make this vote. The Hammond Sanitary District was created specifically by ordinance adopted by the Hammond Common Council. The, the, it was not created by Munster, therefore, they don't get any say.
But they do have representation on that board, I mean, what?
They have, they're representation, and they also, they also amount to 40 percent of the assessed valuation of the, of the Hammond Sanitary District, which is a special taxing district, which means 40 percent of the, of the bond debt paid by property, you know, taxable property, owners of taxable property will be paid by Munster owners of taxable property.
They're going to pay 40 percent of the 77 million?
Yes. Plus, the, the, our wholesale customers, Whiting, Highland, Griffith, will pay their proportionate share of improvements made at the, at the treatment plant that affect them.
But the thing is, what is the project? I mean, we're being asked to vote on something we don't even know what it is, and the cost and so forth, and the breakdown, that, that's the problem. I mean, I apologize, I wasn't here earlier for that.
Councilman Higgs.
And that's the thing, we're voting on something we know nothing about.
That's true.
Councilman Markovich, prior to you getting there, it was discussed, a lot of the work is going to be in Robertsdale.
Could I, could I interject, Councilman?
Sure. Go ahead.
First off, Rachel from the Sanitary District just informed me that you guys get copies of the minutes, just like I do. So you do the big packets that come from the Sanitary District?
No.
Not on a timely basis. Not on a timely basis if we get them.
All right, well, nonetheless, at the, at the caucus before this meeting, we discussed in detail what you would see with this project. A big part of it, I know you're from Robertsdale, so I'm bringing up the forest main from Robertsdale, is a thirty-six inch forest main. It's two different pipes, to and from the plant. Twenty-four and a thirty-six. Twenty-four. It's emergency repairs, right? That's one thing you'll see in the Robertsdale section. What you're going to see at the end of the day is a huge catch basin, that basically, if you know where Irving Little League is, the catch basin will go from Columbia on the footprint of the Sanitary District property, which is probably three hundred feet north away from the river, and from Columbia, about two-thirds of the way, all the way out to Caymette. It's a huge catch basin, and it's basically a big swimming pool with no water, and when we have overflow situations, instead of dumping the raw sewage and stormwater into the Grand Caymette River, what we're going to do is take that water, and we're going to put it into the catch basin, and we're going to let the plant, the plant catch up, because that's what happens, the plant gets overwhelmed with all the deluge of water it gets, and it just spits water into the, into the river. What we're going to allow them to do with this catch basin is slowly filter the water and make it to the clean standards that the federal government's requiring. And this is, this is US EPA, this is not something that we're undertaking, that we're being told very specifically what we have to do.
Mayor, I can concur with you, but in all honesty, don't know what the project is, and for her to say we get minutes at a meeting, that's, that's not true.
Okay. Well, I don't know what type.
I don't recall if any, if we had copies, is anybody producing the minutes at a meeting?
I mean, we had a caucus.
We get cop, Mr. President.
I actually got my first set of copies this past.
We, we do, we do get copies, but the copies that you're looking for in this particular project, we don't have a copy of that. That's what you're trying to say, is that what you, that?
Well, we were in, we were in caucus before we came out here on the floor.
I understand that he wasn't there.
I wish somebody would've said this, because we could've probably rectified it, we're here two and a half hours.
I'm fine with it, he is requesting.
I'm surprised, actually, I really am, and I'm not saying you have bad intentions, Councilman, I'm surprised, and, you know, I mean, believe me, we're, this is, this has been going on for a long time, you know, since nineteen ninety-nine.
Well, I mean, you can understand too, that, you know, this is a large chunk of money, and not knowing anybody.
Well, believe me.
Nobody knows exactly what it is, I mean, we're taking the advice of consultants who are paid on an hourly basis.
And they, they make that bet tonight.
They know more about fire trucks now than I know about the sanitary district.
You know what's funny, Councilman? I actually said that to him, I said, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about a fire engine, and we got a seventy-seven million dollar bond issue, and, you know, but this is, this is, I totally agree, that is a big number, it's, it's not something I'm super thrilled with, and eventually, this is going to be passed on, for sure, because we're being forced by the government to do this, but Hammond is not the Lone Ranger here. Kerry just got done doing something with the Sanitary District, Michigan City just got done doing something with the US EPA, I know Evansville got done doing something very similar, Indianapolis, it was pointed out to us in caucus before we walked out here, just got done with a one-point-three billion dollar bond issue for the same types of things. If you're an urban, older community like we are, fifty years ago, the standards that they had for stormwater is different than it is now. Now we have to separate the stormwater from the sanitary, and unfortunately, we're an old city, so we're going to have to go through that process.
The only thing I would request is a copy of the project and what's listed in the whereas at some time.
Councilman, whatever you need, believe me, Rachel, could you make sure Councilman Markovich gets whatever he needs?
Well, I would like one as well.
Well, that's fine, guys, you should get copies of that. I mean, I get the packet every two weeks from the Sanitary District, it's that thick, and, I mean, I'm surprised, I thought everybody got that.
We get a lot of stuff that's redacted.
I get, okay.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
When you said big packet, this, this is the, this is the last big packet that I received, but it's from the Board of Zon, it's not from the Sanitary District. Well, Councilman Henosa, Mr. President, I apologize for keeping coming up, but we will, believe me, I don't think it's any skin off the Sanitary District to get full copies, I get full copies, you should have full copies as well, especially now that the Sanitary District has to come in front of you for bond issues, so, and that is because of a change in state law. So congratulations, you guys get to start getting a lot more knowledgeable about the Hammond Sanitary District, but it's a good thing, and it's a good thing to learn, so I appreciate the questions.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Clerk Golick on twelve, ordinance twelve dash six.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, ordinance twelve dash six passes nine to zero.
President Opinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Clerk Golick.
You should've done that first, that would've paid fifteen hundred dollars.
Introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance twelve dash zero seven sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move that we move ordinance dash twelve oh seven on first and second reading by title, and with a public hearing scheduled for the next council meeting on two-twenty-eight, twenty-twelve, and refer to council as a whole and finance, I so move.
Second.
It's been first by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ordinance passes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Just making sure, this is twelve dash seven, is that correct?
Twelve dash seven, correct.
Item B. Ordinance twelve dash zero eight sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move ordinance twelve dash oh eight on first and second reading by title, and refer to council as a whole and finance committee, with a public hearing scheduled on two-twenty-eight, twenty-twelve, I so move, Mr. President.
Any discussion?
Two-twenty-seven, correction, two-twenty-seven, not two-twenty-eight. Next meeting, two-twenty-seven.
Second.
Do I have a second, Councilman Henosa? Any discussion? Any discussion on twelve dash eight? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second, ordinance twelve dash eight passes.
Item C, ordinance twelve dash zero nine sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move twelve dash oh nine, first and second reading by title, and refer to council as a whole and finance, with a public hearing scheduled on two-twenty-seven, twenty-twelve, I so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
First by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second ordinance passes, twelve dash nine.
Item D, ordinance twelve dash ten sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance to appropriate funds within the Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move twelve dash ten on first and second reading by title, and refer to council as a whole and finance with a public hearing scheduled on two-twenty-seven, twenty-twelve, I so move.
Second.
First by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, ordinance twelve dash eleven sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, and ordinance amending ordinance number forty-one oh nine, also known as section point, section nine-one point zero-five-two of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to animal license fees.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of twelve dash one-one, refer to council as a whole on two-twenty-seven.
Second.
First by Councilman Vanez, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance passes, nine, zero.
Item F, ordinance twelve dash twelve sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, and ordinance amending ordinance number forty-one oh nine, also known as section ninety-one point zero-five-zero of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to animal license applications.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of twelve dash twelve, refer to council as a whole on two-twenty-seven.
Second.
First by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance passes.
Item G, ordinance twelve dash thirteen sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, and ordinance to create a new section of section one-eighteen of the Hammond Municipal Code as it pertains to cash-for-gold businesses, scrap dealers, and pawnbrokers located in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of twelve dash thirteen and refer to council as a whole.
Second.
On two-twenty-seven.
First by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Emerson, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance passes, first and second, twelve thirteen.
President Opinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Number ten, resolution.
Item A, resolution twelve R dash zero five sponsored by Councilman Opinker, a resolution appointing Janet Vanez to the Board of Hammond Urban Academy.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move for final passage of resolution twelve R five, I so move.
Second.
First by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali. Emerson, Councilman Emerson, second that. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, resolution passes eight, one absent.
President Opinker, that concludes the reading of the resolution.
Number eleven, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Henosa.
Just two announcements, that the Festival Crime Watch will be meeting on February the sixteenth, I believe it's at seven PM at the Jean Shepherd Center.
Seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty, at the Jean Shepherd Center on February the sixteenth, and also the Indy Illy Neighborhood Crime Watch Association will be meeting on March the sixth at seven PM, Tuesday, March sixth, seven PM. Subject about the Henry.
Councilman Henosa. Any other new and.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Where's that meeting at, at Indy Illy?
First United Methodist Church.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President, I just want to send my condolences out to the Jared family and the loss of their mother, Ms. Rosie Jared, your prayers, and my prayers are to the family in their time of bereavement. Just wanted to put that out there.
Clerk Golick, I'd like to send a letter to Chief Brian Miller in regards to some good police officer work done a couple weeks ago, they apprehended a burglary in progress, seven thousand block of Magoon, and this guy has, and this was in broad afternoon, I want to say around twelve, twelve-thirty in the afternoon, this guy's already committed to about five other burglaries in that neighborhood, so I'd just like to compliment him and his men on good, good work. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I just wanted to have a letter sent to the chief as well, put that in the form of a motion in regards to some people been knocking on some neighbors' doors in the nine-hundred block of Mero, and acting as though they're salespeople, and actually making the residents over there a little scared, so just wanted a little more presence over in the nine-hundred block of Mero.
Second.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I'd just like to, and I think in the right order of business, if I'm not in the right order, you can correct me, but the Edison Elementary School chess team won the regional tournament earlier this year, and moved on to the state individual chess tournament on two-four-twelve, and did, did pretty good. I won't read all the names, there's a number of names and how they did, but we're very proud of them down in the Edison neighborhood.
Okay, give them a big hand. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President, I'd like a letter sent to the Board of Works and Engineering Department in regards to the property at nine-eighteen Carroll, it needs to be demoed, the house is in deplorable condition, and it really needs to be taken care of, I so move, Mr. President.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, send the letters, first by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henosa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to send a letter to Mr. Nance and thank him, as well as the superintendent of Public Schools for being so helpful in getting Safari Brain where started, and made what an elementary school, I so move, Mr. President.
Second.
No, that was, that wasn't a motion there. Any other new and unfinished business?
Yeah, that wasn't a form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any other new and unfinished business?
Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
Are we having a special meeting for anything? Before our regular meeting?
For what?
For the meeting for what?
For the health department or what?
No.
For the safer, for the safer grant.
Safer grant. Safer grant.
We had a safer grant, we was trying to get another ladder truck, but it didn't happen.
Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Mr. Ed Lamelli.
Thank you, again, Ed Lamelli, President of Hammond Firefighters. I just wanted to clear something, it seemed like we're very adamant about when people come up here to give their addresses, but I didn't see one of these consultants give their name or address, I guess everybody knows who they are, I don't know, maybe I missed that, but I thought that was a point of clarification for you. Those of you that supported Mr. Chico Henoos's amendments, I appreciate it, from the bottom of my heart, and the firefighters that I represent, I think you were trying to make the right choice. Those of you that chose not to, I wish I knew your reasoning, I, hopefully, we can talk about that in the future, but I would make sure that we come to your districts, your crime watches, and educate the public on that. This is, this is getting turned around, that it's about an overtime issue or this or that, this is about nothing but safety, and we tried to make that clear. I don't, I think it's really something else that's, somebody in the audience knows how you're going to vote before you vote, I think that's a little bit insulting also to the citizens that you represent, but I will tell you, I hope that everybody stays safe, I hope everybody in your district stays safe, and I will tell you that I'm ashamed that somebody chooses, and if you choose this, we will definitely make sure that the public knows that you choose Festival Lakes to support that financially over public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamelli. Joe Sinclair. My call.
Hi, Councilman. I just wanted to read a little bit to you guys real quick, this is the two thousand eleven primary PAC candidates night questionnaire sheet. It's kind of interesting. I'm not picking on anybody, but I'm going to do it in reverse alphabetical order on our no votes tonight. If elected, would you use your district's casino gaming funds or support such an action by the council to increase fire protection staffing or the fire department in any way? Councilman Al Salinas, yes, I'd continue to support the fire department with increased staffing and upgrading of equipment and vehicles. Voted no. Ms. Vanez, same question, if elected, would you use your district's casino gaming funds or support such an action by the council to increase fire protection staffing or the fire department in any way? Of course, and this was a good answer, she said, initially, my answer would be yes, however, given the financial challenges we face in the futures, it would be unfair to give me to give me your unequivocal yes without citing specific situation. But I have to be honest, the firefighters' union has yet to hear from you as far as these safety concerns. You listen to the mayor, but you haven't listened to the guys who are in there fighting fires. Councilman Spitali, don't take this as a slam, 'cause I've always considered you a friend. If elected, would you use your, your casino district gaming funds to support an action by the council to increase fire protection staffing of the fire department in any way? Need to keep the maximum manpower and keep as many rigs as possible. This is all pretty telling to our members now. The mayor's answer, I have in the past and will continue to do so in the future. That's it. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Uh, last speaker of the night, George Stoya.
I thought tonight the display by, uh, Attorney Allegrini was consummate haughty arrogance. And you guys let him get away with it, so don't shake your heads yes. You know, he's gonna sit there and blow us all off, citizens and this council, I don't know how, how many of you acquiesced and how many of you really don't give a damn? But, you know, we don't know what we're gonna be charged. He's gonna come back in a couple months when everything's all been bidded out and the, the jobs been, uh, awarded or the bids been awarded, and he'll say, we need this much money, otherwise, the Justice Department's gonna come after us. You guys are gonna nod your head, yeah. And when I or somebody else comes up and says, hey, how much are we gonna have to pay? Uh, we don't have to tell you anything, by statute. And you guys are gonna let him get away with it. You know, years ago, I had a, I was commissioned by, uh, one of the mayors of one of the nineteen cities and towns in this county to do a study and call up all the cities and towns and make a comparison of the utility bills, their fees, their costs. You know why? 'Cause he was, he wanted to know how competitive he was with respect to luring people in to move to his fair city. You know what? I worked probably thirty hours on that thing. I could not bill 'em. You know why? Because nobody wanted to tell me what their fees were. Yeah, because nobody knew. None of the people knew, they didn't want the people to know. And yet, you know why? 'Cause that way, they can charge whatever they want. And I, I cited that case about that, uh, case in Jefferson, Alabama, where they were paying fourteen dollars a month for their sanitary district, and it went up to, uh, close to two hundred dollars because it kept getting refinanced, 'cause the Wall Street guys would come in, they'd take the guys out, wine 'em and dine 'em, and then, you know, they'd just start playing money, rolling the money over. These guys don't know, like you said, none of you guys know about, none of you guys know about this stuff. I don't either that much. Got a decent idea of it, but these guys come in, they start talking stuff, and if you need to be refinanced and then, so, you know, all, all these bonds are, are sold on Wall Street, I guess it's gotta make up the nut. We do. And what happens if, if, what, the bond, the bonds can't go into default? Those are debt instruments. So, yeah, bump it as you need it. Let's cede the tax caps. That was utter arrogance. I don't know what's going on around here anymore, but if, you know, Chico, uh, brought up last meeting, excuse me, Councilman Hinoza brought up the fact that he was concerned about the, the population distribution, whites, Hispanics, uh, African-Americans, and how there was too many Mexican-Americans or, or Latin-Americans, uh, in proportion to[1759.61]